Nathan, thank you and and big thanks to everybody for for doing this. This is town hall meeting number 1,022 in my years having the honor to represent Oregon in the Senate. It's part of the pledge I made every county every year. And I am in Hood River. I am at the Columbia Gorge newspaper and anxious to hear from all of you today. And before we get to our meeting and apologies for some allergy challenges today. I've been doing a fair amount of sneezing. I think I'm not the only Oregonian so challenged today. And we're just going to get to your questions. I just want to make two quick points. Number one, with respect to guns, President summed it up last night enough, enough of all these excuses, enough of the inaction, enough of being the only Western industrialized nation that can't deal with this. And it's time for common sense gun safety. And we can have common sense gun safety and show that you can do it in a way that's consistent with the Second Amendment. And I also feel very strongly about mental health. Senator Mike Crapo, Republican of Idaho, and I just proposed a couple of days ago, a significant expansion of mental health services delivered through telemedicine and a mental health bill of rights. So that's coming up. And my real hope is that members of the Senate come back and see how strongly people are feeling about these issues. Second, I know that climate change is enormously important in Hood River County. I think we've got a real shot at getting my Clean Energy for America legislation passed this year. This would be transformative. We would basically throw the existing tax code as it relates to energy in the garbage can. And we would say for the future, the more you reduce carbon emissions, the bigger your tax savings. So I know many of you want to talk about climate change and we will be interested in your questions. And one final note, and that is grassroots involvement is everything. And community discussions on the ground gave Senator Merkley and I some direction so that we were able to have a significant success like the extra funds for the East Fork Irrigation District for piping that helps the farmers and improves habitat. So this is all about reducing the distance between Oregon and Washington DC. Over the next hour, hour and a half, whatever Nathan gives us, let's make sure that that Hood River is being heard and we get a chance to hear what the county feels is important and I'll do my best to respond. So let's have at it, Nathan.
Terrific. First up, we have Joseph in Hood River.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good. Senator, thank you for holding this forum and taking our questions. My name is Joe Condon. I live in Hood River. My question is about a topic of climate change. In the majority of public discussions about the effects of human activity on climate change, the fossil fuel industry has singled out as the main focus of government policy. According to the United Nations Food and Agriculture Organization, the animal agriculture industry has at least as much and by some studies far more impact on climate change. Why do you think that the agricultural, animal agriculture industry is not included in climate policy recommendations by the federal government?
Well, I, I think we should start with the proposition that these challenges are not mutually exclusive. You just heard me describe my Clean Energy for America bill. That would be dramatic because in terms of spending, we spend the most with respect to various kinds of tax subsidies and the like. And then in the private sector, the pricing of goods and and services. So taxes and prices are instrumental. Agriculture, of course, is also a contributor to climate, climate change. And I'm for using every tool in the toolbox to fight climate change. And everybody ought to be asked what they're going to do to step up. So I introduced the Healthy Soils Healthy Climate Act, which supported ag producers who adopt practices designed to improve soil health through increasing carbon levels in soil. And we were able to get that into the last farm bill. I'm going to try to expand it in this farm bill, number one. And number two, we're trying to make sure that the money that was designated in the bipartisan infrastructure bill recently, the $5 billion, we want to make sure that it focuses on farmers and ranchers and communities. When they deal with drought, that they do that in a way that's sensitive to climate change as well. So your point is well taken, and I don't think these things are mutually exclusive. I think we ought to be tackling the fossil fuel side and I'd be tackling the agriculture side. And anybody, yeah, absolutely. And let me just say, and then we'll go right to you. This is not just me offering up some answer that is sent from Mount Sinai down to town to the land. We'll take a question. I'll try to give you my take on it. And by all means, I want this gentleman and others to be able to have kind of a free flowing conversation. Yes, go ahead.
So federal government through the farm bill provides a large amount of subsidies to the animal, the meat and dairy industry, right? And so we are subsidizing subsidizing the production of these products, which are, as I said, on an equal footing of producing both methane and carbon dioxide as the fossil fuel industry. So on the one hand, we're subsidizing these industries, many of which are run by large corporations. And again, the foods that they're producing have been linked to chronic diseases in humans and we're paying for the healthcare on the backend of that. So again, this is not something one, you know, piece of legislation is going to change. But the discussion in the public and you, you know, whether it's at the United Nations or the COP conferences or any kind of thing you're hearing out of Congress, there's complete silence about the agriculture industry. And it's all focused on carbon taxes and fossil fuel industry. And the cost of transitioning, you know, everyone's in support of renewable energies, right? But the costs of transitioning fully away from fossil fuels is in the trillions and it's going to take decades. Whereas through public education, through changes in our subs, federal subsidies, and through incentivizing the production of healthier foods that are less impactful on climate in a negative way, we can, this is kind of the low hanging fruit that the federal government through a more coordinated response and taking this issue on against some very, you know, strong and well financed political interests, I think provides a balance to this discussion that I frankly think is missing.
Yeah, well, again, you're raising thoughtful points. And one of the reasons that I've always championed the farmers who produce in this area, some of the best fruits in the country, not only are they incredibly nutritious, but I think you know, they're not part of any big subsidy, you know, program. They're not raking in these huge sums. So your point again is is well taken. And let me kind of incorporate it into your kind of view with respect to the timing of all this. The situation is urgent for everything. We have to get all of it as fast as we can. Now, my Clean Energy for America bill, combined with the methane limits that we have been working with our kind of sister committee on, those two are projected to hit 70% of Biden's carbon emission targets, which is over a 10 year window. That's essentially the period that you use for these measures. So the work I'm talking about is plenty significant. Now, again, we ought to be doing everything you're talking about as well. And I have, for example, been a leader in terms of getting more nutritious foods in the school lunches. You know, I was one of the pioneers of farm to school. You're absolutely correct. And, you know, part of this is an education issue. Take a guess who some of the biggest supporters of some of those foods you're concerned are.
Well, I could tell you that much of organized medicine takes donations from these same organizations. So there's unfortunately, a lot of money being spread around that is one, trying to confuse the science and trying to suppress this issue being discussed at national level.
What I was thinking of is some of the most influential anti-hunger groups have supported some of these practices in school lunches that aren't very healthy for the kids because they sort of operate under the theory that all calories are created equal. And I've been saying, holy Toledo. I mean, lean fruits, vegetables, protein and the like. This is not part of all things are equal. So your point is well taken. I've been very supportive of things that show that we will move as quickly and urgently as the challenge presents on this because you're dead right in terms of everybody ought to be part of this. Agriculture is a significant part of it. And whether it's my healthy soils effort or farm to school or methane limits, I'm all in.
Can I make one last comment?
And then that's it. We do have to go, we've got nine more folks waiting.
I understand. So the USDA obviously has a committee that comes up with nutrition recommendations for the American public, whether it's the food pyramid or the healthy plate. And on that panel sits both members of the scientific community as well as industry, which you could ask why industry at that table? Canada recently, in recent years, has excluded industry from being part of that discussion. And in their nutrition recommendations to their public, they've removed, for instance, dairy is no longer on their essentially food plate. Why is it that our government continues to have what should, a committee that should be staffed by people who know the science? That is in part influenced by industry who clearly have financial conflicts of interest in terms of the educational message that's put out to the American public?
Yeah. Um, I'm not up on the composition of all of these groups and I'm sure that there's validity to your point. I will tell you, I think there's primarily a question of political will. This is a question of whether elected officials in an era of dark money, in an area, area, in an era of Citizens United are willing to take on these big groups, these very powerful kind of interests. And in some instances, they just overpower everybody politically. But also, as I just mentioned, and I was struck by this when I was trying to expand some of my farm to school kind of programs and the like, how so many groups that really mean well, they really are against hunger. They're for kids being healthier, kind of say, well, I don't know if we'll ever get this stuff that you're talking about. I just got to get calories to kids and all calories are sort of created equal. So we've got some educating to do and we've got some politicking to do. Good points all. Thank you for.
Thanks for joining us, Joseph. Uh, next up we have Richard from Hood River.
Thank you, Senator, and welcome back to Hood River. This is a great opportunity for us. I have some experience in analyzing firearm injuries and in, and in also evaluating firearm policies. And although I'm hopeful that some of the policies that have been proposed might pass, it seems that we've been in a, an impasse on gun policy for a long time. And I've been thinking that maybe we should revive an old idea. And that is a bit different that might help address the alienation of young people, especially young men. And I wondered if anyone is talking about the potential again of universal service, a year or two of service that might be in the armed services or AmeriCorps or something similar for both men and women. And it can be after high school or at age 18. Firearms safety and responsibility could be a component of that kind of a, of an experience. But more important, these young people will not be as isolated. I believe that it is a mistake for us to fall into the trap that has been set in the area of mental health. We stigmatize mental health and do not do a service to people who are suffering by equating their issues with violence. And, and although mental health is important in this, I believe that it's the isolation of young men and the impulsive nature that if they had more folks around them who cared for them, that perhaps, and who would talk to them, that we might have more opportunity to prevent these events. It's the isolation that we've created for them that's a problem. So I, this came up because I saw the young people in the Idlewild Cemetery Memorial Day Celebration, who were the honor guard there. And, and I've also been impressed with the, the young people in AmeriCorps who have been really helping us in the gorge. So I wondered if this is something that's been pursued, can be pursued? And if so, if you've got a staff person that you could identify that I could talk to about it?
Yeah, Jacob, who's sitting with me can help you with, with that. And, you know, let me kind of unpack your point because it's exceptionally important. My brother was schizophrenic. There were years and years when the Widens would go to bed at night worried that my brother was going to hurt himself or somebody else. So we have given this a lot of thought. My dad actually wrote a book called Conquering Schizophrenia. It was a well known kind of author. And the first thing I tried to do last week, because I've been talking to leadership on both sides, they want a mental health provision. I mentioned our work with Senator Crapo, the mental health bill of rights for consumers to be more clear about what they were entitled to. I said, look, part of this does involve mental health issues. But let's start this debate rejecting the stigma. And I'll give you one factoid, and that is the overwhelming majority of people with mental health challenges are not committing murders in our schools and other community centers, period, full stop. So this is part of what we need to do. It is not everything. Now, with respect to your national service point, what I can tell you is with the volunteer military now, the high level officials in the military do not want conscription. They want people who are there because they want to be there. I think your point though, a new outlet for young people to participate in is very good. And so I have proposed the 21st Century Civilian Conservation Corps, which could be hugely valuable right here in this part of Oregon, where we could have young people paid to go in there and clean out those overstocked timber stands and be involved in other valuable efforts in the woods and reducing, you know, fire risks and, and the like. And I'll also tell you that we've had some exceptional young people over the years from Hood River County. Some may remember Eva Jones from Hood River County, who came to my 2018 town hall meeting and basically got everybody motivated to be more serious about gun violence. So I'm all in on your basic, you know, proposition. And the question is, what are the best areas and where can you pick up the most support? And I think smart program, first reject the stigma. If you do nothing else, reject the stigma against people who have mental health challenges. And I will be prosecuting that case on the floor of the United States Senate. Every single day as chairman of the Senate Finance Committee, which has jurisdiction over the biggest mental health programs in America like Medicaid. Okay, number one. Number two, let's try to find as many appealing programs that encourage like the 21st Century Civilian Conservation Corps would to get young people excited and involved.
Perfect. Thanks for the question, Richard. Next up is Bernard in Cascade Locks. Bernard, you are muted. Feel free to unmute yourself.
There we go. Hey, Senator Wyden, thanks so much for putting this together. And, and just as a general comment, you know, I follow you.
Bernard, you froze for a moment. Dude, go ahead. We got you.
Am I, am I go now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. Okay, I'll start over. So thanks again, Mr. White. Good Lord.
Uh, actually, he's coming through on our end, Senator Wyden. I'm not sure if.
He was, he was, yeah, he's mostly coming through. Let's give him one more shot.
Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay.
We're throwing some more technology at it, Bernard. Sit tight here for one sec. Here we go. Okay.
Okay. So thanks again, Senator Wyden, for put this forum together. And thanks in general to what, you know, I follow you on Facebook and several media and, and your unwavering leadership on so many fronts that are challenged in our federal government nation is, is just admirable. And I, and I'm very grateful for the work you do. And as I do my best to try to understand the forces and challenges facing our nation, the top two for me are democracy and climate. Today I do want to talk about climate. And the question I want to ask you, and you've, you've kind of, you've taken a bit of it, but I want to maybe just dive into it a little more is the, the question I had written is what sort of solutions do you see as possible that both sides, you know, Republicans and Democrats could agree on that we could actually turn into a law to address the, the climate challenge we're facing? And then, you know, would those be enough to meet President Biden's goal of 50% reduction in emissions by 2030? Now, if I'm hearing you right, that Clean Energy for America Act would get, would, would it get 70% of Biden's 50% goal or would it get 70% instead of indeed a greater amount than Biden's 50% goal? And then is that a law that you think would get, you know, the 10 Republican senators we need?
Right. Great question. Let me walk it through again. The Clean Energy for America bill is something that has never been done in the history of taxes. Normally we just give these tax breaks out and go, all right, let's see if they make any sense. What I did is throw them all in the trash can and said, in the future, the system will be based on technological neutrality. That is an idea that while the Republicans under Mitch McConnell won't be for it now, a lot of academic people, conservative, moderates, liberals, all think technological neutrality is the future because competitive, market oriented. And you can then say, as I did, the more you reduce carbon emissions, the bigger your tax savings. So that's the way it works. Now, in terms of the target, the Biden program for 2050 involves my Clean Energy for America bill. And it reaches about 50 to 60% of Biden's target for 2050. And then the methane limits that I have worked on with our sister committee probably gets you another 15% or so. So together, the two of them are pretty close to 70% of Biden's target for 2050. Now, as somebody who's studying climate, you know, a lot of people think the target should be even greater. And I probably do. You know, I, I think all the experts are underestimating this. We all remembered what it was like last summer, walked outside and our house in southeast Portland, 115 degrees. I mean, this is not some abstract issue. It is much more urgent than is being portrayed. And we don't have it done yet. But Senator Manchin and I have talked a lot about technological neutrality, incentives for reducing carbon emissions. And while I have nothing to announce this afternoon, I'm hopeful that we're going to get that passed. Does that respond to your question?
It does. Can I do one small follow up?
Yeah, of course.
So, so, you know, I, I'm from Texas and I, and I, my folks are still down there and I have a lot of friends down there. And when you talk about climate, I mean, they really do glaze over because they look at you. It's like, do you not realize like our entire, you know, East Texas economy is based on the fossil fuel industry? And the more I, I chew on that, the more I say, look, we've got to figure out carbon capture and sequestration. So my question would be, would the clean energy, would it somehow incentivize or fuel that work? Because they're going to want to continue to, you know, make money selling fossil fuel. And I'm like, I'm fine with that as long as you can make your emissions go to zero, what CCS would do. What do, what do you say to that? There's a strong, you know, push to somehow make those guys whole.
The carbon capture concept absolutely is eligible for Clean Energy for America. Okay, let me repeat that. Carbon capture, absolutely eligible for the incentives in Clean Energy for America. Senator Manchin and I have talked about this many, many times. And they also think that this idea of technological neutrality that I talked to Senator Manchin about years and years ago is kind of a science based theory that gives everybody, whether you're in East Texas or Hood River, a chance to step up to the plate. If you've got ideas for reducing carbon, you can play in this marketplace that I created. At the very beginning, when it goes into effect, you get a chance to play. So if you're in East Texas and you're sitting there with a good carbon capture idea and it's going to be cleaner, it's going to hold, make, make the energy system in various sectors in East Texas more efficient, you're eligible right there for two of the three major breaks. So that was one of the threshold questions. The answer from the author of the bill, the chairman of the Senate Finance Committee, last time I looked, is absolutely, it is covered.
Bravo, sir. Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us.
Now we got to get a path, but we're, we're, we're working on it.
Thanks for joining us today, Bernard. Next up, we have John W. in Hood River.
Hi, Senator Wyden. How are you? Hey, I'm something outside of the office here.
Are you walking outside? Good for you.
Yeah, I'm in the office. So I'm here in Hood River and I run a kayaking business. Yeah, I think you're right across the street from me actually. And I employ about a dozen people here in my Hood River store and operation making kayaking gear. And I have another operation out, out, out east with another dozen people. But I've been in business for about 25 years.
We're losing you.
Yeah, John, I don't know if, if you're able to go back inside. Your connections are a little.
The question I have is regarding, oh. Is that better?
So far, so good.
All right. So my, my question is regarding the River Democracy Act and whether this has a chance of passing this year.
I know, I know the, I know the author of it.
Yes. And so, yeah, I do. I think you might, you might be familiar with that person. What are the chances of this, of this passing? I mean, this is something that would be great for our, for our industry and certainly my business. And protecting another 4,700 miles of river in Oregon would be fantastic. But I just don't know. What, what, what do you think? What, what's the, what are the, the pitfalls here? What could happen or what could go wrong or what are the chances?
We're busting to get this done this year. We still have a public lands bill to write. They usually get processed, what's called marked up towards the end of the year. What I wanted to do was much like Clean Energy for America was something that had the potential to really be transformative. We said bills normally get written in Washington DC. We're going to write it in Oregon. And so we went out and we took nominations from every corner of the state for citizens' ideas for what should be added to the Wild and Scenic River system. Now, on my watch, when I've been chairman of the Energy Committee or a member of it, we have gone into second place in the United States in terms of protection for wild and scenic rivers. The only state that's beating us is Alaska. And I've told Senator McCauskey to tell her constituents, we're coming after them because we're going to get into the number one slot. Now, what we tried to do is operate under the theory that recreation is a big economic engine today. Look at your business and others. And what we showed in the pandemic is what people really cared about was getting outdoors. So I'm really hopeful that we can get this done. We have pulled together hundreds of small businesses from across Oregon like yourselves and people sell equipment and guides and, you know, people who have restaurants and people get out on the mountain and hikes and all the rest and come in for some craft brews. And we have made some changes that I think really break new ground. We have, for example, fire safety corridors alongside the rivers because, you know, rivers are real breaks in this whole effort to deal with these infernos that are coming at us. So I think we got a real shot at getting it passed this year. I'm going to stay at it until this becomes law. It's one of the most important things I've ever been part of.
Yeah, I mean, I've been around long enough. Remember the seventies and eighties when it seems like out, getting outdoors is really part of the American culture. And with canoe clubs and kayaking and backpacking. And the pandemic may have started this, but it seems like. the pandemic may have started this, but it seems like everything we're seeing, and this is across our entire industry, not just paddle sports, but the entire outdoor industry, we're seeing Americans participating in the outdoors like they never have before. And I don't think it's a temporary thing. And I think that something like this River Democracy Act will look really, really smart in a couple of years if it manages to pass. I think it's it's going to be something really special. Just my observation.
Let me give you something else that I think you'll enjoy. Last week, the committee approved my Recreation Not Red Tape bill, which again speaks to the future of recreation. You know, one of the things that I noticed back when I was chairman of the committee before I went to the Finance Committee, Senator Manchin went to Energy, is the number of people who want to sign up for tours and all the rest and permits. And they'd get up at 3 o'clock in the morning, some part of the country and wait in line for hours and, you know, usually couldn't get through because a bunch of the agencies didn't have online processing. And I go, wow, it's 2022. We're still in the dark ages in terms of processing. Uh, people who want to pay good money for recreation here in the United States? Maybe I'm being too logical for the federal government, but I'm gonna propose that we have these online permits. Everybody looks around and says, why did it take this long? So you can look it up. It's called Recreation Not Red Tape. We cleared the committee last week as part of a package. So Recreation Not Red Tape plus River Democracy, I think are big wins for everybody in Hood River who uses recrea enjoys recreation, offers goods and services that relate to it. And I'm making this one of my big priorities.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
Thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Paige, who is also at work and has let me know she's unable to ask her question herself right now. Uh, she needs to stay muted. She's a local grocery store manager. Uh, so Paige, hopefully you're able to listen in and I'm going to read your question that you sent me. Paige says, having a reliable, clean source of water is important for more reasons than just to have a beautiful river or lake to fish out of. Having usable water also ensures that we are able to feed our families and communities the way we always have. With climate change, fires, drought, and a host of other environmental problems these days, Senator, what are you doing to ensure that our rivers continue to flow freely and provide the way they always have?
Well, great, great question. And sorry, we're not getting to to see, um, uh, and you're sending this through, um, through Nathan, but, you know, protecting clean water sources is just so important. It's been a top priority of mine. And let me tell you what the River Democracy Act does for clean drinking water. The previous question was about river democracy and chance of passage and how it worked and how it affected recreation industries, but River Democracy helps protect clean drinking water. And it ensures rivers and river corridors are mad are managed to enhance their special values like clean drinking water. And that would include areas close to Mount Hood, these river corridors. I chaired a water hearing recently on, uh, one of the subcommittees highlighting how important water is to Oregonians. And I just want everybody who's following this bill to know that this is an area I feel really strongly about. We had two bills in the hearing, the Watershed Results Act, that would use the best available science to identify and implement cost effective, uh, high impact kind of community based efforts, uh, to protect water. And the Water Conservation and Farming Act that helps communities like, um, those in Hood River County better plan and prepare for the increased demand for clean water. So good question.
Terrific. Well, Paige, I hope you were able to listen in there. If not, you can watch the recording after the fact. Uh, next up, we have Miles in Hood River.
Uh, thank you, Senator Wyden. Uh, really appreciate you being here and making time for this. So, uh, my name is Miles Johnson. I live in Odell, which is just up the valley from Hood River. I'm, uh, I'm also a senior attorney at Columbia Riverkeeper, an environmental group here, um, here in Oregon. You know, I just want to say to start off with, um, you know, I I really appreciate so much of what you do, um, you know, as a lifelong Oregonian, having, you know, having someone looking out for our river systems with, um, with the River Democracy Act is is huge. So, you know, we have beautiful places to go. Um, you know, I'm, I'm a gun owner for responsible gun ownership and responsible regulation. So I, you know.
Can everybody online see that that statement got a gigantic thumbs up? Because the gentleman, Miles, just said he was a gun owner for responsible gun ownership. And let's all give him a bravo, 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 because that's exactly what we need to hear. Good on you, Miles.
Well, I I don't know if I deserve applause for that, but we do exist. So, um, and you know, I'm, I'm also a customer.
There's a lobby out there. There's a lobby out there. We need everybody to speak up.
Well, thanks. Yeah. And I'm also a customer of the East Fork Irrigation District. So, you know, I I appreciate so much what you do and uh, just want to preface, you know, what I'm about to say with with gratitude. So, you know, the, uh, my question is, you know, a- as you know, the importance of salmon to Oregon communities and our cultures here is is immeasurable. Um, you know, the problem we have is that NOAA is predicting that a lot of, uh, Snake River Springs Chinook stocks and other, uh, you know, other salmon and steelhead in the in the snake could be going extinct in the in the coming decades. You know, therefore, we think the the need to restore the Lower Snake River, um, which would benefit not just Idaho, but Oregon tributaries like Grand Ron and the Minam, the Wenaha, the Inaha. Um, you know, that's a really pressing need. Um, so my question is, you know, can we continue to count on your leadership in 2022 to prevent extinction of salmon, to support, you know, the kind of growing region wide efforts to restore the Lower Snake River um, and replace those services those four dams provide?
Yeah, I assume you're talking about, you didn't say directly Snake River Dams, and let's just operate on under that theory. Look, the reason why I got us into second place in the nation in terms of Wild and Scenic River, um, protection is because I said we've got to do this in a collaborative way. In other words, if you look at the natural resources laws and the structure of them, everybody's got just enough clout to block the other guys. So you've got to build coalitions to do it. And the snake, which does certainly has implications for us a little more, obviously for Washington State, means that you gotta deal with fish hugely important. You got to deal with recreation hugely important. You got to deal with egg hugely important. Business hugely important and trade hugely hugely important. So you got multiple priorities here. And that's my view of how you get important protections for special places. You say, hey, we believe in multiple use. We're trying to use that principle to the most extensive uh, fashion that you can. Now, it's easier said than done. What our delegation is doing, Senator Merkley and I have been working with Governor Inslee and Senator Murray, because Washington and Oregon, we try to team up wherever we can. And I think Senator, uh, Governor Inslee and Senator Murray are getting close to having some of the recommendations for next steps and the and the like. I don't want to, you know, put them on the spot, but they're making some headway in terms of working with the stakeholders.
Terrific. Well, thanks for the question.
Yeah, and and and, um, Nathan, let's give our friend, if he wants to follow up with any comment on that, because I think he's talking about something that's a bedrock priority for this community in Oregon, which is protecting fish. And, uh, what I said can be sometimes controversial. I'd like to hear his response.
Oh, you know, I I just want to, you know, make sure that, you know, I I think you're right. You know, having healthy fisheries is a bedrock concern for Oregon. You know, the thing about the Snake River Dams is that we can do all of the things that those dams do, um, in different ways except have a river that supports fish. So, you know, I'm totally on board with the need to, you know, have have a broad coalition, come together and figure out a way that, um, you know, that we can all move forward together in a way that supports, um, you know, that that supports the the people who depend on those services. Let's not pretend that, you know, those dams don't help people out. They do. They also impact a lot of people really negatively as well, you know, probably no one more than tribes in the Columbia Basin. Um, but a lot of commercial and sport fishing.
I'm glad you said that. That also is a hugely important issue. We've been working with the with the tribes, uh, as well. Senator Merkley and I were able to get some funds to assist those villages. It's been a disgrace. There's a lot more to do. And the important part in the in the Snake River Dams issue is this not something for sitting around and studying for ages and ages. This is something where you pull people together, you say, look, and this is what I've been doing in other areas like the Ohi and the like that are special. Nobody gets everything they want. Nobody gets everything they think they ought to have. The question is, can you build a coalition around people getting what they believe they really need? And each one of those interests has been important to the quality of life in the Northwest. And I think we can do it. And I think Governor Inslee and Senator Murray have, uh, uh, been through this before. It's not for either of them. Their first, uh, such effort. And, uh, we're going to be working closely with them and try to move with urgency, not sitting around studying something for ages.
Thanks. I totally agree with the need for urgency. And I, you know, I think your style of, uh, call it the Oregon way or or whatever, but bringing everyone together, um, is really needed. So I'll I'll in there, but really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Miles. Uh, next up, we have Kristen in Hood River.
Hello, Senator Wyden, Kristen Dillon. Pleasure to see you again.
Yes, you as well.
Uh, so I'm calling about something that's going pretty well in Oregon, but it has me very concerned in large, large slots, slots of the country, which is voting. Um, here in Oregon, we made some great progress even last year with, um, making mailing ballots not require a stamp anymore. You know, we pushed the deadline out so that ballots that are postmarked by election day can still get counted if they get there in a week. Um, but what I'm hearing and seeing in other states is things moving very much in the other direction. Paul and I, my husband and I, got an interesting taste of this in 2020. We volunteered in North Carolina for a couple of weeks as election volunteers and ended up doing the door to door ballot cure canvas, which was basically driving all over to the beautiful North Carolina countryside, knocking on doors, trying to help people understand that their ballot wasn't good, their absentee ballot wasn't going to be counted. Um, and in North Carolina, which I think is kind of middle of the road in voter suppression, um, ballots have to be signed by the voter. They have to be signed by a witness. The witness has to write their address. The address has to include the zip code. If if any of those provisions aren't met, or heaven forbid, like the two people sign on the wrong lines, the ballot gets thrown out unless the voter takes further action. So I guess I'm just curious to know, what do you see that you and your colleagues in Congress can do on this front? And also for those of us who are citizens and sort of happy with the way voting is going in Oregon, but really concerned about what could be happening across our country with implications to us if it changes the federal government, um, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm glad you're bringing it up. And, uh, you know, this is, this is so central to what our country is all about, is protecting the right to vote. And we have seen things that just have seemed abominable, this whole business of you're in a line on a hot day and somebody can give you a bottle of water. It's just takes your breath away. It is just so flagrantly wrong in terms of, you know, basic fairness. Now, um, I do want to make one point with respect to us before I take it kind of national. We got to make sure, and you talk about urgent business, that what happened in Clackamas County in this primary never, never happens in Oregon again. It's hugely important to people in Clackamas County. Um, but it's also important to the whole state. Because I have essentially committed to trying to take the Oregon system nationwide. I'm the first senator elected in America completely by mail. I'm a Democrat. First, second senator in America elected completely by mail, not often remembered at this point, is my friend Gordon Smith. One D, one R. With respect to the system, we had some of the strongest conservative Republicans with a son, Dennis Richardson, our late Republican Secretary of State, used to kid me, one of the most conservative guys around, he would say. He told Donald Trump basically to go fly a kite when Trump said that Oregon's system was riddled with fraud. And conservative Dennis Richardson, as conservative as the day is long, as they used to say, told him, Mr. President, you are wrong. We don't have it. Uh, Bev Klarnow, who's also known known well around here, a very prominent Republican, Central Oregon, same thing. And we had Democrats, Phil Keisling, our former Secretary of State. So there's been a lot of sweat equity devoted to this. And we got to make sure, and I think our Secretary of State is hammering this away, hammering away at this too. We got to make sure in our corner of the world, where we're 3,000 miles away from DC, we never ever have happened again what happened in Clackamas County, where they may still be counting ballots now. For all I can tell, I mean, you know, they were declaring the winners and losers and all that. Can't have it happen again. Now, I really think that we ought to take our system nationwide because I say that Oregon is the gold standard for casting an informed ballot. In other words, when you get to take it home, you were talking about you and your husband are volunteering. I'm sure when the ballot arrives at your house, you guys are setting it up and dessert or something and go, well, so and so, so and so, this measure, that measure. And guess what? Spouses love each other. They have differences of opinion on ballots. And one says, we ought to do this. No, you should do that. But the point is, I really think we're the gold standard for casting an informed ballot. And people in this country during the pandemic, it was amazing, some of the conversations, I'd be walking through an airport somewhere, not in Oregon, and somebody would come up to me and said, hey, I didn't know you, you know, you're the guy got the law passed to give everybody in America the chance to vote by mail. The first couple of times, I couldn't figure out what they were talking about. And I said, um, I just got to tell you, my law hadn't passed yet. What's going on is your local voting officials said during a pandemic, no other way to have people vote without getting sick. So they're going to mail it to you. But it's sure an indication, right? You liked it. It was good. And it gave you the time and you and everybody in the family who has to make a decision, everybody can talk and then go off in their own room and kind of make their decisions and all. Um, they said, yes. So people are ready for this, but we're going to have to fight suppression. We're going to have to make sure that our wonderful name that was built by Republicans and Democrats in this state over something like two decades plus, we can't let it be tarnished with the kind of thing that went on in Clackamas County here. I feel very strongly about it. You can probably tell. Because, uh, you know, it was very, very infuriating to people in Clackamas County, as you can imagine, many of them called, but I also don't want this to be something people remember about us. They got to remember that we were the ones who pioneered it. And in the first election, apropos of the first time, you know, for a special election, this was the election after Sir Packwood resigned. Um, they would have like 20 or 30% voting. I mean, practically nobody did. We had over close to, we had close to 70% of the people voting in the dead of winter, one of the coldest winters that we had experienced. So we showed a long time ago, we were on to something. So let's protect that and then work with you on trying to take the issue, you know, national. There are other issues along the way. I want to reform the electoral count question. But one other thing that because you're and you and your husband are doing such important work is these hearings that start on January 6th. On the here, the hearings that begin on the January 6th insurrection begin like, I think in four or five days. These are really important hearings because they go right to the heart of how it was that our Capitol was hit. These are really important hearings because they go right to the heart of how it was that our Capitol was hit with domestic terrorism. And that's what it was, domestic terrorism. But domestic terrorism is defined as is people being willing to resort to violent acts in order to achieve political objectives. And I was on the Senate floor when people were battering the doors down. And, and what I can tell you is, all I could think of, I was getting all these calls from relatives and everybody's worried and all the rest. All I could think of is, this is what goes on in other countries. Doesn't go on here. It can't possibly be happening here. Well, it has happened here. We can't let it happen again. And three cheers for you and your husband for being big volunteers.
Thanks, Senator.
Thanks for joining us today, Kristen. So next up, we have John, who has let us know, full disclosure, he lives across the river in White Salmon, Washington. But he works on the Oregon side of the river and has some important issues to resolve.
Let's have freedom of speech for John.
So John, take it away.
All right. Thanks, Nathan. And thank you, Senator Wyden, for being here. It's a pleasure to be able to chat with you. I just want to first off, say thank you so much. And I applaud your efforts for the Rivers Democracy Act. And the work that you're doing to get that pushed through and hopefully passed this year. I've been working in and around wild and scenic rivers for the past 15 years. And so it's something that's near and dear to my heart. And something I was really excited to see come up and the way that rivers were nominated and everything was, was really nice to see. The people have a hand in that. And so my question to you is, what are you doing now and in the future to protect stretches of rivers and bodies of water that are not wild and scenic?
I haven't asked that question in some time. You know, I off, I just got asked a, a question about the snake and earlier today, the Columbia. But I got my hands full with wild and scenic, you know, rivers, you know, protection. Tell me, are there other areas? I mean, remember, this affects multiple uses. I don't know if you were on when I started talking about clean drinking water. You know, our legislation, you know, the whole separate clean drinking water statute. Our legislation, because of the rivers in Oregon and affecting clean drinking water, that relationship is hugely important. And that's in rivers democracy. So some of those additional uses, I think we also pick up on in our bill. But go ahead. Are there, please tell me about other water bodies that you'd like to see people like me work on, protecting?
Well, it just seems that maybe that there might be some loopholes in the wild and scenic designations. As in, it protects certain stretches of river, but it doesn't necessarily protect upstream of that stretch or downstream of that stretch. So it would just, it would be nice to see, in addition to the amazing wild and scenic additions that we're having now, to see broader regulations based on bodies of water and maybe runoff from agriculture or industry runoff. Just to see an elevated sense of protection across the state and bodies of water that are not going to be protected with the gold standard of wild and scenic.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? If you had a couple of rivers that you felt needed upstream and downstream protection, get those to me and let me follow it up. I mean, part of it is, the politics of this are very, very challenging. You know, we've had a number of county commissioners who said, no, in our area, we're not going to have anything kind of thing. So if you had a couple of areas where your point with respect to upstream and downstream, which clearly can be accurate in some cases, no question about it, could be made in an understandable way and we can start bringing it up, I'd like to see it.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll dig in and see what I can find.
Good. Just a, just a couple. I would make a point about these off-stream, upstream and downstream implications would be good.
Terrific. And John, I'd be happy to, to pass that information along. Did you have one final thought?
Cool. Yeah, I have kind of like another.
Your, 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 your child wants some clean, clean rivers.
She does want some clean rivers. She's right here. She's all about it. We actually live, we actually live, we live right on the White Salmon, which is a wild and scenic river, and we're down there every day. And so we see.
Cool. Hi sweetheart, your dad, your daddy's working hard to have you and your friends get clean rivers.
So I guess my one question, and I haven't dug into a section by section analysis of the wild and scenic additions that you're making. But there's, there's problems when a wild and scenic river flows through not federal land. Is there, is there, do you see a solution to a wild and scenic, to being able to enforce the wild and scenic designations as a wild and scenic stretch of river runs through private land or county land or other?
You know, this, this is very hard to address in our bill. Now, I think the connection you're making between federal land and private land is very important. And I'll tell you a 30-second story. When I got elected to the Senate, I had been hearing repeatedly about the problem you described, that to some extent in the Northwest, we have lands that are checkerboard. You know, there's some federal, there's some state, there's some private, there can even be some county. And there would be federal dollars for the federal portion of a watershed. But if there was a private portion, you couldn't use them to work the watershed even. So I, I'd been in the Senate for like 10 days. And I was an enthusiastic young fella. And I raced to the Senate floor with my amendment to fix the watershed law. So that you can use those federal dollars apropos of your point on a piece of private land or state land, as well as federal land, when you're working the whole watershed. And Slade Gordon, late Slade Gordon of your state, was chairman of the committee. And I had just won the election and Slade had been on the other side. And I came over and I offered this. And he came up to me and he said, Ron, this is a good idea, but it's kind of not in line with the procedures. Let me fix it. So he did. And he put it in his bill. And the next time I was home, a group of people, environmental folks came up to me and they said, Ron, we love the Wyden Amendment. And I turned to my staff and I went, what's the Wyden Amendment? And it turned out that Slade Gordon had rewritten my thing, made it very good. And now, when it comes to watersheds all over the country, the federals, the states, the privates can work together. And people really, really like it. So I'm very sympathetic to your point. It's kind of hard to do on the wild and scenic issue. We do try with the river corridors to try to get as much fire protection as we can. But we'll probably have more luck on your other idea, upstream and downstream, if we take a couple of them and see what we can do about trying to address that, if you can make a good case. But if I, if I had my way, if I had my way with respect to working on these environmental issues, we give the government the flexibility where there's anything resembling a checkerboard, some federal, state, private kinds of things, which is very, very common in Oregon and Washington, we give the government the authority to work in the whole area. When, when the community and the private players want it.
Great. Well, thanks for joining us today, John. Aaron, who is a local restaurant owner, also let us know he had to step away and had a similar question about protecting lands outside of the wild and scenic rivers. So thank you, everybody who joined us for this substantive conversation here today, whether you were on the video conversation or joining us on Facebook Live. Thanks to everybody who participated in all the town halls this recess. And Senator Wyden, thank you for taking the time to go all across the state in this one-week recess. It's been a pleasure to moderate these town halls. As you know, as well as anyone, there's nothing partisan about listening to your constituents. Your only colleague who's come close to you this year and holding as many town halls is your, your colleague, Senator Grassley in Iowa, who's nobody's idea of a, of a progressive, but is equally committed to listening to his constituents. So we hope the rest of your colleagues get on, get on board and, and hold more of these in recesses to come. Senator Wyden, the final word is yours.
Many thanks. And the thanks go to you and Hood River County. Once again, not a bad question in the House. And the Columbia Gorge News, the, the paper, we sure ought to support our local papers, folks, because they give us all that coverage that you aren't going to get from some national network or something back east that's only talking about some, something that's sensational on the East Coast or the West Coast, but doesn't have much to do with, say, you know, rural Oregon and what everybody is, is dealing with. So with those thanks, let me also say, this is, in my view, what public service is supposed to be all about. I don't have all the answers, not by a long shot, but in these five open-to-everybody town meetings. And as Nathan said, anybody who's wanted to in these counties could. And by the way, over the weekend, I'm going to have some veterans, town hall meetings in eastern Oregon specifically to hear from vets. So this is what public service is supposed to be all about. I call it the Oregon Way. And big thanks to People's Town Hall. Thanks to everybody for taking time on a Friday afternoon to educate me. And we'll put this in the to-be-continued department. But Hood River County came through once again with just a terrific discussion and look forward to doing it again soon. Thanks, everybody.